He's going to go, he lived in Jeff's like.
He does, yeah, I could have had the company when I was up there. He's good.
So.
Did he ride across? Yeah. He was there, I just didn't call him, I shouldn't call him.
Well.
He'll be out. Just like. Where's the place? Always. I should call him. Yeah. He's on. Two guys. Somehow they managed to find us all around each other. So they just took two of them across. Go. The name is. Oh. Be nice guy. I've got to know. Okay. I play with him. He'll be out. Riding. Just like. Where's the place? I always. They. I always had so. Yeah. I should call him. Yeah. He's on. Ride across.
Yeah.
Two guys. They. Somehow they managed to find us all around each other. So they just took two of them across. Go. The name is. Never could ever.
All right, it's six o'clock, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Welcome to O'Conne County Board of Commissioners meeting, today is Tuesday, September first. If you're joining us virtually, hopefully using a computer or smart device to ask a question or make comments, use the raise hand feature. Just a moment, we'll ask you to stand for a moment of silence, then after that moment of silence, we'll ask Daniel Haygood to lead us in the pledge. All right, it's six o'clock, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Welcome to O'Conne County Board of Commissioners meeting, today is Tuesday, September first. If you're joining us virtually, hopefully using a computer or smart device to ask a question or make comments, use the raise hand feature. Just a moment, we'll ask you to stand for a moment of silence, then after that moment of silence, we'll ask Daniel Haygood to lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business will be to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. Motion second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. This next is our opportunity for citizens to make any statements or remarks for anything that is not on the agenda for tonight. Everyone virtually? Thank you. Any statements or remarks from commissioners?
No.
Uh. Our next meeting will be September twenty-second, not the twenty-ninth, like I mentioned last week, we had to move this up for some training that was scheduled, but it's not now, but we don't want to change the date. So September twenty-second will be the next commission meeting. At that time, we'll do the Hotel Motto Tax First reading. As of today, the census response rate is sixty-nine point three percent. Now, in two thousand and ten, we had a seventy-three point four, so we're sure hoping we can exceed that, so if you haven't had an opportunity to do your census, please do it. With that, we'll move to the next item, which is approval of minutes, this is for August fourth, two thousand and twenty, the Tax Milage Levy Public Hearing. August fourth, two thousand and twenty, Board of Commissioners regular meeting. August twenty-fifth, that was our next tax mileage public hearing. Also, August twenty-fifth, the Board of Commissioners Agenda Setting Meeting.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes estimated.
Second. Motion second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is hearing in zoning actions. First item is our hardship variance number P two zero zero one four four. This is for Danny and Carol Rogers. Twelve forty Twin Oaks Trail in Watkins, Watkinsville address, this is five point five four acres requesting a variance on the UDC Section three five one point zero two C guest house restrictions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you'll notice the location on the eastern side of the county. This is off of Twin Oaks Trail, the aerial showing the parcel here. It's currently zoned AR and it is in the country estates character area. This is the site plan showing the request and they're proposing to build a, an accessory structure in this location, a guest house. And because it is in the side yard, it cannot be placed in the rear yard due to septic and stream buffer issues and topography. So they're requesting for a variance to put it in the side yard. These are elevations of the proposed structure. And staff recommends that this request does meet the necessary criteria to grant the hardship with the one condition.
All right, now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, good to see you all, I hope y'all doing well and thank you for taking the time to open the meeting, to have business. Hopefully it's not as normal, but hopefully we pray that soon it will be back normal, so thank you very much for, for doing that. Um, my name is Abe of Willham Dunn, I'm an engineer with ABE Consulting. I'm here on behalf of the owners and we have submitted this request and if we can get back to the site plan, Mr. Herring, I would appreciate it. So if you look carefully, you will see all the slopes have been marked, notated. You will see that we have very steep slopes in addition to numerous ditches and creek in the back. And with this subject property being a little over five and a half acres and the position of the house sitting, to be able to set this proposed guest house behind the buildings, almost near impossible. For one thing, we have the existing septic system there and as you know, the environmental health department requires that you also provide a repair field. And so if we put that building behind the house, as would be required, you know, we won't have a place to put septic because the wells also have a hundred foot radius that are restrictions for any septic tank or septic drain field. So with all the topography and as you could see, the ditches, the slopes and the ability to put something that's accessible and to get accessible, it'd be very difficult to place on this property, even with five and a half acres, you know, available to use. It's just topography and drainage and ditches in addition to the placement of the house, so the house is actually set quite a bit distance far away from the driveways, which makes it even more difficult to be able to place the guest house and the law suite behind it. So we're here to ask with experience to allow that house to be placed in the side yard versus in the rear and that's the whole reason really this request, but it's just, it's near impossible to replace it on this and it fits that various requirements and conditions pretty well. I'll be glad to answer any questions, Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for this hardship variance? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments and open it up to questions from commissioners. Then we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve hardship variance number P twenty dash zero one four four. Danny and Carol Rogers Consulting, twelve forty Twin Oaks Trail, Watkinsville, five four five four acres, AR. Owners question of variance from UDC Section three fifty-one dash dot zero two, guest house restrictions to place a guest house in the side yard for residential property with the one condition.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve hardship variance P two zero zero one four four. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, motion carries. Next item is consider hardship variance number P two zero zero one four seven. This is Todd and Jennifer Benton, Benton, Benton at twenty-seven ninety-six Rivers Edge, it's two point one six acres. And the request is variance on UDC three forty-eight, a private garage or carport.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is located on the western side of the county. At Water's Edge and River's Edge, again, this is a corner lot. It is currently zoned AR and is located in rural places. And the applicant is again requesting to place the garage in the front of the house based on the fact that they have two front yards on a corner lot. Staff recommends that this does meet the requirements for the hardship and the one condition is being proposed.
Yeah, we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, my name's Ryan Hollinsworth. I guess I'm the agent for the, for the owner of this, I'm actually their contractor, so they couldn't be here tonight, but like I said, we would, the only really location available to put this, it's a detached garage. So it will share the same driveway, the side of the house has the septic, same septic problem, we'd have to put a new driveway in. This is in a gated subdivision, as you can see with the two sides, you have a large tree canopy to the left of the struc, to the proposed structure. So we feel that this is a really good spot for the, makes good sense, so appreciate you here.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the variance? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments and open up to any questions for commissioners. We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve hardship variance. Number P two zero dash zero one four seven, Todd and Jennifer Benton, Ryan Hollinsworth is the agent, two seven nine six, Rivers Edge, two point one six acreage. Current zone in AR one. Request, owner requests a variance from UDC Section three four eight, a private garage or carport to place a detached garage in the front yard of residential property. So I make a motion to approve with the one condition.
Second. Very good, we have a motion and a second to approve hardship variance number P two zero zero one four seven with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is discussing consider public works recommendation for design services of the State Route fifty-three roundabouts. Those negotiations are still underway, so we still don't have a price. If it's all right with y'all, we'll just bring it back on the twenty seconds for discussing consider if we have pricing by then. Also to note that the Coal Springs Road from Snow's Mill to State Route fifty-three will be closed starting September sixteenth. So we'll do social media broadcasting and also have message boards out for the next two weeks notifying people of what's going on. We know that's not the final fix for that intersection, but we're going to try it out to, that takes that one very serious conflict point. Anybody's been through there coming off Coal Springs trying to make a left or right turn, it gets very challenging. Next item is discussing consider intergovernmental agreements with the Board of Education Acts, O'Conne Area Resource Council. Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, really quickly, the, at the last meeting, I discussed an agreement entered into for the coronavirus relief funds, which we are to receive from the state. Visa the federal government and working on an agreement with the Board of Education Acts and, and ORC as far as providing services. As of right now, we do not fully have all the funds in hand, we are waiting on it from the portal through the state. I think I know what the funds are going to be, but until we actually receive the full amount, I can't bring, I would not recommend bringing you the final agreement until we have them in hand. I plan to have a full agreement for you on the twenty-second, but we can execute it at that, at that point.
Any questions? Next item is our consent agenda, we do have a request to remove item. Item number four for the olive basket, the applicant, Mr. Eric Geisler, has asked for him to withdraw his application. So if this is all right with you, we'll take that off. Did any commissioner wish any other items to be removed from consent agenda? We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve consent items one, two, and three, removal of number four.
Second. We have a motion and second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Do you have need of an executive session for land acquisition and personnel?
I make a motion that we go into executive session for land acquisition and personnel.
My second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries.
Yep. They're all moving in this direction.
Thank you, we need a motion to go back into regular session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Saxon?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. We are adjourned, thank you.